Ready? Board members, don't forget to enter the meeting on your microphone. The regular meeting of Iberia Parish School Board to be held at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, in Iberia Parish School Boardroom at the Administrative Building located at 1500 Jane Street in New Iberia, Louisiana. Call to order, let Iberia Parish School Board Meeting be called to order at 5:30 PM. Roll call, Ms. Gwen.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
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 Oh.
He's here, he got a mouthful of cookies.
Mouthful of cookies.
Mr. Prado, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Sappa, Mr. Maye.
Here.
Mr. Duga.
Here.
Mr. Sharpe.
Here.
Mr. Rose, Mr. Reverend Allen, Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Gwen. We'll have a moment of silence for Ms. Ann Sharon Croquet, retired elementary school teacher and reading interventionist and mother of retired Belle Place School Principal. Followed by that, the prayer by Mr. Reverend Alexander and the pledge by Mr. Segura. Please stand for a moment of silence.
Let us bow eternal God. We come first and foremost just to say thank you for another opportunity to come as the district to take care of district business. Give us the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, make the best decision that we can make to make this district all that you would have it to be. We ask that all in your darling son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Mr. Segura.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Mr. Segura. Public comment instructions on an agenda item. The requirement regarding public comment for a school board meeting is that a call for public comment must take place prior to each agenda item and vote on by the board. If you wish to comment on an agenda item during this meeting, please proceed as follows. Please fill out a card with your first and last name and the agenda item you wish to address. These requests to address the board regarding an agenda item to be heard will be heard prior to each agenda item as it's taken up. Any cards to be turned in. Hearing none. Moving on to B, Presentations, Recognizations, and Reports. B1, Recognition of Elementary, Middle, and High School Student of the Year. Mr. Hulane.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to the board three students that were selected to represent Iberia Parish Schools moving forward in the Student of the Year competition. All of these students were selected by their schools, and then we had a district-level competition where they submitted writing and participated in interviews with district staff members and community members. And out of that process, we selected one student to represent us as the Elementary Student of the Year, and I'm happy to say this year that that student is Alexander Shaw Lattaker. He is a 10-year-old fifth grader at Belle Place Elementary who proudly introduces himself as creative, talented, and family-oriented. He enjoys cooking with his mother, watching sports with his father, and sharing music with his sister. Surrounded by a family full of unique strengths, from his mother's love of reading to his father's success at work and his grandfather's carpentry, Alexander embraces his own gifts as an artist, a reader, a writer, and a basketball player. Drawing, especially anime, allows him to express himself while reading transports him to different worlds. He dreams of becoming a basketball player, an architect, or an electrician, careers that reflect his passion for creativity, design, and hands-on learning. Alexander is also a member of the Lit Crew, where he can share and celebrate his passion for reading. He is excited and honored to continue representing Belle Place Elementary this year as the Elementary Student of the Year. Congratulations to Alexander Lattaker. Alexander, you come forward. We have a plaque and a certificate for you. And I ask that if your parents please stand and be recognized. They're here tonight. Congratulations. Our Middle School Student of the Year is from Belle Place Middle School, and it's Isabella Jaslin Diaz. She's a 13-year-old eighth grader at Belle Place who describes her life as a story full of culture, learning, and growth. She's deeply committed to her education, and she has maintained honor roll, nearly perfect attendance, and active involvement in a beta club as the vice president. Influenced by her Mexican and Cajun heritage, early experiences in scouting America, and strong family support, she enjoys creating art, reading, collecting unique items, and especially playing multiple instruments in the band. While exploring possible careers from veterinarian to journalist to teacher, she currently aspires to become a physical therapist so she could help others. Isabella is also passionate about raising awareness of the Gifted Program, promoting suicide prevention, and expanding clubs in elementary and middle schools so all students can explore their interests and feel supported. She is determined to advocate for these causes and help create more supportive and engaging environments for all learners. Congratulations, Isabella Diaz. And I believe her mom's in the audience and maybe a little brother. Congratulations. And a few years ago, Isabella's older brother represented us as the District Student of the Year and made it all the way to the finalists. He was a state finalist in Baton Rouge. So when I went to present the award to her at school, I told her she definitely had to one-up her brother. And last but not least is our High School Student of the Year, who couldn't be with us tonight, so we're gonna make arrangements to recognize her at a future board meeting as well, but I will read her biography. And the High School Student of the Year is from New Iberia Senior High, and Mr. Harding is here to collect that award in her absence, and it's Petra Liamco. A 17-year-old high school senior and second-generation Laotian-American, Petra stands at a crossroads as she prepares for college, unsure which school or major to choose due to her many passions. Raised by immigrant parents alongside two older brothers who both attend four-year universities, Petra has always been driven by academic expectations and inspired by the role models in her life. Her interests span from art, where she champions human creativity against the rise of AI, to music, which she first discovered through piano lessons before the pandemic created financial strain and halted her formal training. She also developed an early fascination with engineering through time spent in her father's drafting office, a path she hopes to pursue in college despite concerns about national education funding. Though still undecided about which engineering discipline to study, Petra remains committed to designing and building solutions that benefit others, believing that her varied talents and determination will ultimately guide her toward the right path. And you may recognize her name because she was presented before this board before because she was one of the very few students to make a perfect score in the ACT, so we recognized her for that as well. But congratulations to Petra and Mr. Harding. You come forward and receive her plaque and her certificate.
Mr. Harding, you got your chest poked out, I see you.
She really is grateful. She would have loved to be here, but she's grateful our parents, they're so appreciative. And it'd be a next time.
Yeah, perfect. So congratulations to all the students and best of luck in the future competition, and we know that you'll represent us well.
Thank you, Mr. Hulane. Congratulations to everybody. Moving on to Presentation B2, Group Health Plan Financial Performance Update. Ms. Kim Clay.
Well, good afternoon, good evening. I know usually when I'm up here, it's supposed to be good news, but I know that you see all the red on that paper, and so therefore it's not great news tonight. But I have some things that I'm gonna share with you all just to kind of show you why or how we got to where we are and where we see ourselves going. For October, it was the second worst month that we've had since we went self-funded in 2022. It's the second worst month. The contributions into the account, $1,049,709. Our fixed costs, $118,443. And you see the claims, the medical claims for October, $1,151,292. In one week in October, we had $300,000 in claims, and one-third of that was a new NICU baby. So that will be our third NICU baby of the year. Our RX claims were $404,772. So that brings the total claims to $1,648,651. Plan cost of $1,767,094. We did receive a small amount of stop-loss, $13,414,415, but we are receiving $39,000. So we just, it hadn't been confirmed. November, we'll see that stop-loss recovery. Unfortunately, the new claims didn't meet the spec. I don't know if that's unfortunate or not, but they weren't high enough to meet the stop-loss deductible, so we won't see any reimbursement for that. That leaves us with a deficit of $574,148. Like I said, we had another NICU baby. So you know, it's one thing to have one NICU baby, but this year we had three. Last year, at this exact time in 2024, we had 13 claimants at $100,000 or above. Currently, right now, we have 22 claimants at $100,000 or above. So as you can see, the inflation in the claims and the number of claimants, it has just risen dramatically. In 2024, we had seven claimants between $100,000 and $2,000. In 2025, we have 17 claimants between $100,000 and $200,000. We had no claimants in 2024 between $400,000 and $500,000. This year, we had one, and we also have one over $500,000. So this year, we had a lot of really high claims. Now, if you remember, for the renewal, we did make some changes to benefits. Those start January 1st of 2026. These really high claimants, it's not gonna really affect those. They're gonna meet their out-of-pocket regardless, but we did make some deductible and max out-of-pocket changes going forward for 2026. We do have three ongoing cancer claims where they're all over $100,000. So that's where we're seeing us now and going into the future. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Clay.
I wish it was better news.
I think Mr. Perez set you up on this for me.
You notice he's not here, huh? Well, thank y'all. Y'all have a good evening.
Moving on to Agenda Item B3, Monthly Sales Tax Report. Mr. Bryley's gonna give us some better news.
Yeah, I have some good news for you also. Thank you, Mr. President. Sales tax collections were $3,642,523.67, which is the figure in bold print on line nine. And the total remitted to the school board was $3,668,318.86. If there are no questions, I can go into my comparison report.
Hearing none.
Comparing October 2025 to October 2024, we are reporting an increase of 12.91%. A few comments. Another great month for collections. Once again, a single payment from one single taxpayer makes up the bulk of the increase, but we had similar large payments last year that made up that increase. When looking at collections without these irregular transactions, we actually still would have had about a 12% increase, even if you take those out. Unfortunately, looking ahead to next month, I would expect to see a decrease. Even if we have another large payment from the same taxpayer, I don't think it'll be enough to overcome the increase that we saw in November of last year. Finally, we had increases in the following categories. Oil and gas was up 81.6%. Manufacturers were up 34.1%. Convenience stores were up 19.5%, and motor vehicles was up 14.1%. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bryley. Moving on to B4, Tax Salary Supplement Report. Ms. Tennen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The cash balance on the 50% of the 3/4 cent sales tax salary supplement for October is And the cash balance on the 90% of the half-cent sales tax salary supplement for October, $6, This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tennen. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to remove one for discussion? Hearing none. C1, Approved Minutes, Regular Meeting of Iberia Parish School Board, November 5th, 2025. C2, Progress Payments, Capital Improvements. C3, Budget Revisions. C4, Financial Highlights. C5, Budget to Actual. C6, Physical Facilities Housekeeping Report. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Reverend Alexander, seconded by Mr. Pratier. Questions by the board? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen. That motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item D1, Consider Recommendation Regarding Payments, Partial or Substantial Completion, Partial or Final Payments, Change Orders, and Budget Revisions and Take Appropriate Action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I have the pleasure. That's what, that's what happens when you have a change order. I have the pleasure of presenting some change orders tonight. So Item A1, which is Coto Elementary, a change order in the value of $15,400. Technically, this is a change order because it changes the value of the project, but we bid this as a unit price when we bid the job, knowing that this was a very good possibility. With the extension of the manufacturing time on the wastewater treatment plant, we're looking at installing that plant starting on the Friday when Christmas holidays lets out. It's actually our longest window. Christmas falls on a Thursday, so the E's fall on a Wednesday. They'll be doing it in four days, working through the weekend, and they're using some of the Thanksgiving holiday time to set some of the items they can set to quicken that turnaround. We also have the Cotton Street Plant. We've gotten that open on the Saturday after we let out through working with Sewer District One so that we could discharge the sludge that we pull out of that old tank and then be able to bring in the new tank. This is for the board road. So given the timeline that we have, we're in the winter, we're expecting rains that are gonna start on Friday and into next week, some more rains. So instead of taking the opportunity to tear up that ground and possibly break utilities, we're exercising that right of a unit price, which was bid with the bid. So we knew what value it was of $15,400 to install mats on the side of Coto Elementary to allow for the removal and installation of the new wastewater treatment plant. Item number two is for the gym. So that's the ARL project called Phase 1. We did discuss the change order number one, which was the tank trim kit during the board retreat. Quick overview on that. The contractor bid it through two contractors, one providing the tank, one providing the pump system. In doing so, he saved $60,000, and in doing so, no one provided us a price for the pieces that tie those two units together. So that is the change order that we are talking about, number one, in the amount of $14,009.60. So overall, we saved about $45,000 in that transaction by splitting it between two vendors, but it came back and bid us a little bit in that value. So in change order number five, this is a water line extension. So water line extension, quite frankly, the mechanicals thought the civils put the tie-in. Civils thought the mechanicals put the tie-in, and there was no tie-in. So this ties in the new building, which is in the courtyard. So why are we in Phase 1? Well, the Phase 2 price to tie that in was $13,000, so we shopped it to the contractor that's right in the backyard, and that price came in at $3,323.10. So we saved $10,000 by shopping that. So sometimes it does help to have two contractors on the same project. So now we go to the item number 3A, which is manual commercial, so that is Phase 2 project. So change order number one in the value of $7,075, and this is for sewer line work. So the drawings, the original construction drawings showed a line that we needed to tie in as being three inches, excuse me, four inches. When they dug that line up to tie it in, it turned out the line was incorrectly noted on the original construction drawings, and it was three inches. We needed a four inch, and we had a three inch, and to top that off, it was at the wrong elevation. So they had to add two cleanouts in there and add a four-inch line. Definitely needed so we can tie in our new sewer system. No one's fault. We're not gonna instruct our professionals to go start digging up pipes just to make sure we know what size they are. Then we get to the item number four, which is in the value, the largest one, $40,461.91. And this is for the whips on the light fixtures. So I got a little show and tell for you. So this is MCK. In the 80s, they allowed a cousin to this called BX Cable. And BX Cable was slightly thicker than this. So it fits into a socket, and you screw in a screw, and it tightens down, and that fits into the fixture, and that tightens down, and that makes a solid steel circuit. So they were using the BX Cable outer shield as the ground. It was allowed then. It is not allowed now. So basically, your green is your ground. So if this was BX Cable used in the late 80s, middle 80s, it would have a black and white only. So you really need the ground by NEC Code and by all safety regulations. So we have to do that. We have to put in a ground on our entire lighting system in the school. That method is no longer acceptable. So that is the highest price tag we have. And then we get to the credit, which is change order number five. And change order number five is for removing the glaze block, the blue glaze block in the new construction building, which was really a no-brainer. The glaze block is extremely long delivery time, and if you would be inside the building, you see we have some walls that have no bottom block. They have makeshifts lifting up so they can insert those blocks when they come in in about 12 weeks. So it was a no-brainer to get rid of a color we wish we really didn't have. So that's that dark blue color. So we took a credit on that item for $23,432. If we could, we would have gotten rid of it throughout the school. Unfortunately, we can't do that because we'd have to knock down all the walls and start all over again. We can't really paint it either. We tried that at Westgate. It lasted about two and a half years. And so we're gonna, we're gonna embrace the blue block where it is, but we're not gonna put it where it's new. So that's where that credit comes from. And those are the change orders for this project. I'd love to say that there aren't any possible more, but we are fighting a couple more presently. The final payment is for Delcum High School for the HVAC replacement. As I said last time, we have all paperwork. Every bit of punch list is complete. We simply waited on the lien-free certificate, which you will see included in the payment request, and this is paying the retention amount. So that is a payment in the value of $36,800, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Mr. Segura, seconded by Mr. Pratier. Questions for Mr. Lopez.
Good job, Harry.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lopez, he know what he doing, he ain't got a question.
Hearing none. Ms. Gwen, please vote. Ms. McNeil? There you go. Ms. Gwen. That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Went much better than it would have 20 years ago.
Moving on to Agenda Item D2, Approve the List of Iberia Parish School Board's Hearing Procedures for the Employee Discipline and District Hearing Officer List pursuant to LA RS 17:443-444. Mr. Landry.
Yes, sir. In 2011, the, there were drastic changes. That's the statute that did away with tenure for school teachers. In 2015, they did away with tenure for bus drivers and all other employees, except for teachers. You can still earn tenure, but from what I'm told, with the rubrics that are used, very, very few have been able to do that. In 2011, every board had to have a list of hearing officers. Originally, it was a panel of three, and I think that's the last time, my recollection, that I ever did a hearing, and I think Mr. Hulane was on that panel, if I'm not mistaken. And then 2015, there was no more panel. It was only a single hearing officer. And school boards who did not follow the procedure and appoint a list of hearing officers, Bessie would send a list that they had to use. And of course, we wanted to pick our own, like most of the school board members. Well, since 2015, I don't think we've ever updated our lists, and we've had about three or four that have passed away and no longer on it. So we, I redid the list. There were very, very few changes in the procedure. In fact, the procedure that's used in most school boards, I had a large part in drafting it myself because I was a hearing officer appointed several times in 2015. So that's all we're doing here is the list that's before you tonight. We used to have to have 10. We're down, we only have to have five now with recent changes in the legislation, and so we have eight currently. They have, Mr. Amadi is a practicing attorney. Ms. Chaney is a lawyer for a school board. Mr. Vines is a retired assistant DA. Mark Boya is the attorney for St. Morton Parish. Ed Landry is a practicing attorney. Ryan Blackwell actually represents one of the teachers' unions. Pat McGee is a retired assistant AG, and Catherine Landry is also a defense lawyer. So we have a pretty good mixture, and normally, we're not a stickler for any one of our employees who needs a hearing. I actually let them pick. I don't care who is it on this list. I'm comfortable with all of these people. They're fair. So every once in a while, we have to update the procedure, and we have to have the board approve the list. So that's what's before you tonight. The last time the board did it, I think, was in 2015. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
I have, I have to say this. The reason Iberia has not had really any hearings is, in most part, because of your last three superintendents and your HR department. They do a very excellent job at resolving disciplinary matters. So that's one, that's a big reason why this parish really has not had a hearing in a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Mr. Dana Dugah, seconded by Mr. Pratier. Questions for Mr. Landry? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen. That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Landry. Moving on to announcements. Mr. Hulane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next week will be Thanksgiving break for our schools. Schools will be closed the 24th to the 28th. The offices will be closed Monday, I mean, will be open Monday and Tuesday next week, the 24th and the 25th. Given that the offices will close on the 25th, and we only have received so far one agenda item for the first meeting in December, we would need to have all items in by Friday so Gwen can have the packets ready for the 25th. so Gwen could have the packets ready for the 25th, which is next Tuesday. I talked to the president, and we are gonna consolidate our December meetings into one meeting in December, and that will be the second meeting of the month on December the 17th. So we'll advertise that on our website and make that change on our calendar. Ms. Moore has some information about our schools that are in the football playoffs this week for the second round?
Yes, so we have three teams that are moving on to the regional round. Generec, who had a bye last week, is hosting Grand Lake. Laurville, who beat Villeplat last week, is home again against Church Point. And last week, Westgate beat Airline, and they are on the road to Ruston. Because of the lengthy travel time for Westgate, there is gonna be a 1:30 dismissal for the students and staff to be able to make that drive up to Houston, to Ruston.
Be a better drive.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And last but not least, I'd like to say that I'm very proud of our schools. All of our schools will be participating in two Christmas projects this year to give back to the community. Our elementary and middle schools will be participating in the Gift and Grace Christmas Project. Gift and Grace is an organization that reaches out to our homeless students. They provide us at the beginning of the year with a truckload of backpacks and supplies for students in need, and so it's our pleasure to work with Gift and Grace to collect for them so that they could do Christmas baskets for students in need, and many of those will be coming to us here in Iberia Parish. So that is gonna be our elementary and middle schools. Our high schools and our offices will all be working with the New Iberia Police Department Christmas project and collecting toys that our police officers distribute to kids throughout the community. So if you'd like to donate to any of those, there are collection centers at each of our schools and our offices. So I wish all of you a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Hope you get to spend time with your families, and we have lots to be thankful for in Iberia Parish.
Thank you, Mr. Hulane. Any other board? Mr. Dugah?
If anybody received an email from inviting you to a virtual party, do not open that. Oh, y'all can, yeah, we throw a party, but I'm not doing it over the internet. So, yeah, so I got hacked, so if you open it, you probably get hacked, so do not open that. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Hearing none. Mr. LeBlanc moves. Mr. Pratier seconds for adjournment, discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Gwen? Please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes. Meeting adjourned.